Would be President, this meeting. Blaine Waters, would you lead us in a moment of prayer, please?
Lord, we thank you for this night. And Lord, we ask you, seemingly the economy is better, seemingly a lot of people are looking at Jasper. We just ask you, Lord, to bring the right growth, some smart growth to this city. And, Lord, we just thank you for Mayor Council, City Manager, looking at all the plans and the future. We just ask you for these blessings and favors in your name. Amen.
Amen. We all rise and let's say a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Hayes, would you lead us in our pledge of allegiance, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with vigor and justice for all.
Council, the agenda is in front. I would make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
A second, you, and a second. And any discussion? All in favor? Please vote. Opposed? The minutes of the favor with third reading have been mailed out to everyone. I would make a motion that we adopt those meetings as opposed to minutes as mailed.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as distributed.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Under Old Business, item A, request for Donnie Fowler. Donnie is not here this evening. We're going to move that onto the next meeting that we have.
Please.
Thank you.
Under item B, consideration and approval across the Attorney Ordinance number 2020-04. Attorney David Siphon.
Thank you, Mayor. As the council knows, we have been revising our ordinances to update our municipal court. And in a prior meeting in February, we had a first reading of this ordinance. And therefore, this ordinance is ready for consideration and passage by the council. It's basically providing for the office of the prosecuting attorney at municipal court. And tracks the basic statutory law for a prosecuting attorney. And so, we just need a motion to adopt that ordinance.
Council, I'm making a motion to adopt ordinance number 2020-04.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Enamnis, please. On a similar note, we have ordinance number 2020-06, consideration and approval of municipal court ordinance. Mr. Siphon, again.
Mayor, you may have skipped one. I have the public defender ordinance next.
Oh, is it? Thank you so much. Consideration and approval of public defender ordinance number 2020-05.
And just like with prosecuting attorney, there's been case law in the last few years that now imposes upon municipalities the obligation to buy for a public defender for those that are indigent, that appear within the court. Because your charter allows for not just to find incarceration, and there's constitutional law that basically requires that if they're indigent, then they're entitled to having a public defender. So this ordinance sets up that office for the municipal court. And we had our first reading again in the February meeting, so this ordinance is ready for adoption. We just need a motion to adopt that ordinance.
Council, I'm making a motion to adopt ordinance number 2020-05, public defender ordinance.
Still moved.
And a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Enamnis. Now we'll get to the one I tried to go to. Ordinance number 2020-06, which is our municipal court ordinance.
That's correct, Mayor. And again, this also is part of updating our ordinances to bring our municipal court up to the requirements of current law. It allows the judge to set up, schedule up the municipal court, allows him to set up administrative rules and procedures, an example of which is like a fee schedule if someone wants to flee and avoid having to come to court. So it authorizes that kind of thing, authorizes a technology fee and a court cost fee to help the city recoup its expenses in the operation of the municipal court. So again, we had our first reading of this ordinance in the February meeting, and so it is ready for adoption. We need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Council, I'm making a motion to adopt municipal court ordinance number 2020-06.
Still moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Enamnis. Item E, item E is alcohol application, consideration and approval of T2LLC 585 East Church Street. Senior Manager Brandon, I was...
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Council, you may recall last month, you had an item before you in regards to authorizing staff to proceed with advertising. As such, we have, and the application is in proper order, background, no disqualifying factors. This is for T2LLC at 585 East Church Street, and we just need a motion. The type of glasses is sell beer and wine by the package.
Still moved? Still moved? Got a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Enamnis. And of a similar nature, we have alcohol application that was tabled for the Texas Grill.
Mr. Mayor, Council, similar, this was authorized to move forward with nothing disqualifying other than the requisite posting of the signage on the property had not been conducted. So we've reached out to the applicant to advise them as such, and just to bring them into compliance with the required advertising on site, we'll have to relook at this at next month.
Okay, so you want to table this for another month?
Just, yes, we need a motion.
You need a motion for one month.
Okay.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Under item, excuse me, under New Business, item A, consideration of ordinance number 2020-07, for request to rezone parcel number JA11023 at 26 Hefner Street from R1 to R3. I believe that's Mr. Reese's property. Brandon, if you will, please.
Yes, sir. From staff report, Mr. Mayor, Council, and the public, this was a public hearing conducted on Tuesday, February 25th, last week, before the planning and zoning commission. They heard from staff's presentation, and as a synopsis of your staff report, and then to give you some updates from that report for this meeting. Staff has worked with the applicant for a while. He submitted his application towards the end of December, whereupon we had originally planned to have him on the January PMZ agenda. Unfortunately, if you recall, January 27th preceding Monday is when appointments were to be considered. And as such, the applicant graciously allowed us to put it on the February. The request for R3 multifamily, the applicant originally had anticipated on looking at the .6 acres as an opportunity to do a detached product of six units. In consultation with our city attorney back in January, we then determined through the reading of our definitions that the multifamily component of the R3 zoning designation would require some sort of attachment dwelling unit or a single structured dwelling unit to utilize the six units multifamily. So as such, February 19th, I've talked to the applicant, the applicant and I discussed that, you know, I would move forward with stating a townhome concept because it would at least be in compliance with the request. However, I'd not amend the staff report, I'd already sent it out. But at the Tuesday meeting, last Tuesday, he presented a concept that is in compliance with the R3 multifamily dwelling unit. It does differ from what's in your packet in regards to the site plan. The applicant does have a site plan they'll share with you during his presentation. There are some photographs in your packet, kind of giving you a visual or kind of a somewhat of an elevation view of the proposed structure. But nonetheless, the applicant presented the revised site plan. At last Tuesday's meeting, there were public in attendance that spoke, I believe five persons formally spoke during the meeting, that the chair presented in the floor. In your packet, you do have their comments in regards to the proposed use. Beyond that, when called for a vote, it was unanimous to not recommend the rezoning to the mayor and council. But beyond that, I'll turn it over to the elected if they want to ask applicant to maybe come forward and present.
Mr. Reese, would you have consideration for us tonight?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
For those of you who are members of the public, this is where being a council member gets really tough and sometimes not popular. When Mr. Reese and I first met was after some conversation about this project, which as I've tried to learn about downtown revitalization and things like workforce development housing, inner-city housing, American Disabilities Act housing, I was excited about this project. I have a personal interest in historical architecture, and the project that was presented demonstrated some small lots with Craftsman-type homes that I was very much intrigued by. Again, Mr. Reese, I've had several conversations about that project. At one point in time, we had hoped to go and visualize some projects that were similar to that. But this project seems to have somewhat evolved, and I think it's a combination of us building a new team with good people that we can rely on for legal information. And I think that I'm very intrigued by this concept, but it seems like the project that was presented on Tuesday, even though it is compliant with our current codes and zones, is not exactly the concept that I had originally been so excited about. Had a conversation with Mr. Reese today, and told him that I would pledge to try to support this project as I had before. But again, reflecting on the original appearance of the concept and the buildings, and I pledged to do that. For the benefit of the public, two years ago, when we first identified some of the needs that we needed to focus on as we moved forward with a new vision for our city, building and planning and zoning was one of the ones that was very clear that we needed a tremendous amount of work on. I guess the question could be asked, why have you done anything? And I'll take responsibility for that. The environment that we've been working on until very recently has not been conducive to change, and I think that the new era, we will work in a more congenial and respectful manner to evaluate changes and prospects for change. I think that's simplified by the tremendously enjoyable and, I think, successful retreat that we had. And so, having said that, I'd like to see this project go forward. I'm not sure that I like the project that was presented Tuesday and really just saw it today, but I'd really like for us to find some sort of time that we could maybe commit. And again, Mr. Reese has been very patient. He did submit his application in December, but we've been talking about this project for quite some time. Some of the delays were because of some of the issues we had in our billing department as well as our turnover, our planning and zoning commission. And so, I plead with the council and with Mr. Reese that we find a way that we can work together to see if we can get this project back to where it started, which I think was an exciting project that would fit well, being adjacent to a park. It would increase the walkability of our downtown area, and the homes were much more attractive and I think fit into the current neighborhood more than in the current representation. And I think hopefully there'll be some maybe less public dissent with the project that we initially saw. Again, the legality of these things sometimes predetermines what we can and cannot do. But I pledge to the council and to Mr. Reese to try to find some common ground so we can make this happen in a maybe a little more satisfactory way to our public as well as council and so forth. So, all in saying...
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If there's no further comment among the mayor and council members, my name is Wayne Reese. I am the applicant for this property. I am certainly willing to request that you table this for 30 days. I am happy to meet with you individually to explain this. My concept is more in the lines of traditional neighborhood development, where people can live close to places that they walk to, and so that we can in fact reduce traffic and improve livability. And as I have supplemented this application with additional information, you'll see what the staff already told you, that it is consistent with the Pickens County Comprehensive Plan. It does meet the zoning code requirements that you have. And it's kind of one of those situations that you're kind of backed into, well, this is what we have to zone this property as. It's not that zoning decisions can always be politically popular decisions. They're not popularity contests. But I have a willingness to work with the city. The city has also always worked with me. We've been providing housing in this community for more than 30 years. Some of you may be familiar with the Fairfield Apartments. I developed that when I was, I feel, a wee young lad. That was 30 years ago. My parents managed it for the better part of 30 years, being on-site. And the housing for us was more about, more than just about the housing. I mean, my parents were invested in the lives of so many of the people who lived there. That is a farmer's home project, and it has been quite successful in the community. And I welcome you to drive through there. We're very strict on our management style, but the property still looks good 30 years later. And we would like to do something on this site that will be a tremendous compliment to not only the neighborhood there, but also to the park and what you have done in creating a place for events and as well as the Veterans Memorial Park. I'm very concerned about historical architecture. The building that I proposed is historically in sync with historical architecture, but I'm also into the details. You know, I don't like buildings with these brand-new flat windows or very narrow shutters that are slammed up against the wall that do not have hinges. I want it to be some more authenticity to that so that we can all be proud of it and so that it will make a statement, that is a very positive statement for the community, if you will. So, you know, I'm coming back to you to ask you to work with me and to ask you to, you know, let's see if we can sort it out. I'm also willing to work with the members of the community, as I said before. On one of the houses, we also own, I own the property right across Hickory Street that's over three acres, and we have about five houses there. We have been upgrading those houses. One of the neighbors confronted me a couple of weeks ago and told me how ugly the front door of one of these houses was. Took me a couple of days, but then I called back and I said, "Well, you suggest a color to me, and if I can live with that, we'll paint it." And she was very gracious. She studied colors, and then she came back. But in the meantime, the new resident of the property said, "Oh, I love my front door, don't paint it." And these two people had had a conversation, so they sort of took that issue off my plate. But, you know, I'm willing to work with people, and I'm committed to doing the right thing for the community, but, you know, as a property owner, I'm willing to also stand up for my rights. And, you know, during this period, if you decide to table this, I would ask that you read through the information that I have supplemented the application with. But again, I would ask you to, if you do table it, then let's still move it forward in an expeditious manner. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. And we want you to know that as council, we are united to work with everyone, not just yourself, but all others. And what we need to do is to figure out this grace period, and council, I will ask for your recommendations on that.
If I may, just first off, I'd like to say thank you for being a part of the community, being a positive part, and being able to speak in public in a positive manner. For those of us that have been here a long time, this is refreshing to see. So with that being said, I'd like to table this for further consideration.
You want to put that in a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to table this for further consideration.
Council, I have a motion to table for further consideration. That has been forwarded.
I don't mean to be out of line, but I would ask you to table it to a date specific, and then I would further ask that you also schedule it for another public hearing before the mayor and council at that time.
Mr. Siphon, I'll ask your opinion on this.
I do think it's a good idea to have a date certain for the tabling. The issue that I see, if we're going to try to make the original concept work, which it sounds like there may be some feeling that that was, that a regional concept was better concept for the neighborhood, it'll mean that we'll have to do, change the language of the ordinance, do a text amendment in order to allow that original concept to be done. And of course, to do a text amendment, you know, I can write up a text amendment tomorrow, but then it's still got to go through the PMZ and get approved, and you got to have a public hearing on it. And so, I'm thinking to get it done, to create language that would allow that original concept, with the advertisement requirements mandated by law, you know, that 45 days would be the quickest that we could do it, and it might take 60, just depending on timing and when we can get the planning and zoning board to meet, and whether we can meet the two-week advertisement requirement, 15-day advertising requirement. So, and then you got to have two readings, but we can do, you know, one at a special call meeting if we had to. So, long story short, we can amend the ordinance to accommodate that original concept, but we got to jump through the hoops to do that. And so, I think to be safe, you're probably talking the May meeting, which would be the first Monday in May.
Mr. Reese, I want you to understand that the wheels of our government go slowly, and I think you probably are well aware of that, as I am learning as a new mayor, you know, coming from the business world, things do not move exactly as we would like them to move. But to meet with all of the restrictions that we have, instead of tying us into a specific date, why don't we just agree in principle as a group that we will move this forward as quickly as this government can do so?
Alternatively, I'd like to throw out one thing. I agree with everything that Mr. Siphon says. I think his legal advice on this point is very accurate. Now, I can meet the requirements of your multifamily zoning ordinance by connecting each of these residences with private porches or private courtyards.
I'll have to think about that, that being administrative interpretation. The ordinance just says that they got to be attached. You know, I think what was originally contemplated was the party wall situation where literally the housing units are attached, sort of like a townhouse concept or a condominium concept. So I'd have to think on whether just attaching the porches would be enough, and go back and look to see if there's a specific definition for what is attached. And I don't remember that in the ordinance, and that's why I'm saying it's somewhat of an administrative interpretation. I'm going to have to let you think on that a little bit, because it's one thing to allow, from an administrative viewpoint, a developer you trust to develop something that, as you know, you create a precedent, and then somebody that's not as concerned about the community as you are takes that precedent and creates something god-awful. So I want to think about, and sort of had you outline for me, what you're thinking about what exactly would be attached. Can we set a May 4th? That's our regular council meeting?
If we could set it for a decision on May 4th, I would be happy with that.
That would be the motion I'd like to make. I'd like to make a motion to table this until the May 4th, 2020 council meeting.
With a public hearing at that time?
Make a motion. Mr. Siphon?
Public hearing before that time, would that have to be a separate planning and zoning?
I don't think you'd know.
I don't, we've had the planning and zoning hearing once. There's nothing wrong or invalid or illegal about doing more notice than what the ordinance requires. To me, the ordinance sets out the floor for what's required. I do think if we have another public hearing, that in order to be fair to the neighbors and the community, that we ought to send out written notices again, just so that they are aware that there's going to be a second public hearing, and then hopefully they can come in and see the new concept, and hopefully that will placate the community. But I do, if you do have a second hearing, which I think you can do, I do think you need to send out notices to the neighbors.
And I would request that the public hearing be held by the mayor and council, which is pretty consistent with other jurisdictions' requirements. And in fact, you've got a case that originated here in Pickens County, that there was too long of a separation from the planning commission here. planning commission hearing, and the way we remedy that is to have the hearing with the mayor and council.
Now, I'm familiar with that case. Um, the, the court still said that you only have to have one hearing. As I've been in the law, I don't have a problem with the council having a second hearing, if that's what y'all desire to do.
Is that you'll have, have time, though, between what he's saying here and then by the May meeting?
I'll ask you for it.
Yeah, we're, from a staff perspective, we're comfortable. I mean, we just, we sent out the notice, uh, obligatory, uh, fifteen days will be in accordance with our, our ordinance of not less than fifteen, no more than forty-five days. So, we'll advertise, uh, as a, a public hearing.
You can even have it on May 4th for that matter.
How would that be?
Well, no, it, it's, yes. I mean, I would advertise a, a public hearing for the May 4th meeting.
Okay.
It would be our regular meeting, just, it would just be a special call-out public hearing, so, yeah.
So, can I give you to amend your motion, Mr. Appicant?
Yes. And make an amendment to the motion, make a motion that we table this until the May 4th meeting, and also that staff is directed to move forward advertising for a public hearing same day.
Have a motion in front of us to amend this until May the 4th, at which time we will have a public hearing also. So, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion of, of council? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Reese.
Thank you very much, boy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, moving along, because we're gonna be midnight for Halloween, so, uh, we'll go to item B, which is consideration of ordinance for requesting rezon parcel 0130 at eighteen seventy-four Hobson Road from C2 to R1. Brandon?
Sir, Mr. Mayor, council, and for the public, uh, there was another public hearing conducted on Tuesday, uh, February twenty-fifth, six p.m. before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, the applicant, as well as, uh, the owner, uh, you'll see the application in your packet. Uh, this is a much larger tract of land of, uh, seven hundred plus acres that subsequently had a sixty-acre, uh, sixty-eight acre tract, uh, parcel off, and you'll see the, uh, the platted, uh, parcel on the page behind your application illustrating, uh, the sixty-eight acres. Essentially, the applicant was wanting to, uh, request rezoning from commercial to residential, uh, to allow for approximately twelve, um, parcels to be, um, on the, um, sixty-eight acres. Uh, staff did review this. Uh, the staff report is, uh, in your packet. In essence, what we did was the uniqueness of the parcel when it was annexed into the city, uh, the majority of the commercial property, as you would think about U-City Aerial, uh, is commercial. It has access off of five fifteen. Uh, the parcel that, kind of the, the peninsula, if you will, dips down into Hobson, gravel dirt road, and you draw a line and cut that off. The access is through Hobson Road. Uh, the primary land use is rural agricultural land and unincorporated Pickens that surrounds this parcel. Uh, the applicant intends to develop five acre tracts, uh, which is what the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, recommended. They did recommend approval of rezoning to R1 with the condition of, uh, minimum five acre tracts, uh, which would accomplish what the applicant intends of, between ten or, or twelve, um, parcels inside a larger tract. Uh, we did advise the applicant, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission, that we did have our public safety, uh, drive out there in different, uh, locations. Uh, there is quite a bit of a response time, uh, but because of the proposed use of conditional use of five acre tracts, um, we were comfortable, uh, with, with that idea. Uh, Mr. Siphon did comment that it was, uh, appropriate to put those conditions on, which the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended, uh, to you all, uh, so you'll see in your packet. And I'm not sure if the applicant or their representative is here, Mr. Mayor. They may walk to their night, so, uh, we would just, uh, like to present to you, um, that information.
Council, I make a motion to, um, rezon parcel number zero three one, zero zero three, at Hobson Road from C2 R1.
Make a motion to the approval with conditions on this parcel, you know, conditions being in reference to section ninety-four dash eighty, ninety-four dash one oh six dash one oh seven, section ninety-four dash two oh nine, section ninety-four dash nine, one forty-nine, ninety-four one eighty-three, and seven dash nine, seventy dash nine, excuse me. Any other regulations outlined in the zoning ordinance? All within one motion, sir.
We have that, Lawrence, motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may, if, if it's desired the council to, uh, also, to the condition of the minimum lot size, I'm not sure if that was.
It wasn't particularly, is, I don't know if the.
Yes, sir.
As part of when you said, I think that outlined.
With the, well, the, the particular section of ninety-four eighty does not enumerate. You have to specify the five acres.
Amendment to motion to extend the ninety-four dash eighty with conditions of a five acre minimum.
And would you also add to the motion as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Committee?
Yes, as recommended by the committee.
Oh, just give a second. Okay, so we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, uh, we have done a zoning ordinance amendment that's also in your packet. Uh, it would be ordinance number twenty-two-hyphen-zero-eight, and it basically tracks the, the motion just approved by the council. Uh, the reason for the ordinance, uh, your rezoning map or your zoning map is a part of your zoning ordinance. So, when you grant a rezoning, you are typically amending your zoning ordinance. And the way you amend an ordinance is by way of another ordinance. So, to move this along, uh, took the liberty of, uh, going ahead and drafting an ordinance that, uh, thank goodness, tracks the motion made, um, but we also need a motion to approve that zoning ordinance, uh, that will give us, in fact, also a paper trail, uh, that will help us be sure that we, uh, on a annual basis, update our zoning map and it correctly reflects the action of what the council has done.
So, council, I would entertain a motion to adopt rezoning ordinance that is included in your package. And does everyone see this ordinance?
Yes.
Does it gonna take two reading?
It does take two readings, but you can do a first reading tonight, and then, uh, by your work session, if you wanted to, you could do the second reading at work.
Would we, uh, make that a first reading of the motion? Of the ordinance change?
We have a motion to adopt the, uh, ordinance first reading.
Second.
Now, second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Now, we still have, uh, on the table, uh, B, I think, though.
Council, that went through, I think.
Yeah, it's been. Got C, don't we? Talking Rock Road.
Brandon, look back at the minutes. I said you have it approved. So, we're now ready to move to C, I think, correct?
Correct.
Yes, I, I got confused. I'm sorry.
No problem. Okay, so we are on item C, consideration of ordinance number twenty-two to dash zero-nine for a request to rezon and annex parcel number J eight two oh three eight at one thirty-four three Talking Rock Road, and this would be from RR in the county to C2. Brandon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, for the public, I should have, uh, I've spoken with the, uh, Mr. Reese, the applicant on item A, so I probably should have clarified it for the benefit of, of this meeting. Uh, in regards to what Mr. Siphon had illustrated, what you're in effect doing is considering, uh, the planning zoning recommendation for the public hearing, uh, and then hearing any staff report or applicant's information about a proposed annexation or rezoning. Uh, if there is a desire to approve, uh, or take action, uh, by way of approving, then, as Mr. Siphon illustrated, uh, there is on the agenda the, uh, associated ordinance number for tracking purposes of then amending the zoning ordinance at a later date in time. Uh, it can be a little confusing, uh, in terms of you are having to give direction on wanting to approve a particular annexation or rezoning, and subsequently, uh, that would entail going forward with an ordinance approval introduction as well.
And that would be the first reading of this specific ordinance?
Well, yes, sir. So, what, what I'm doing tonight is I wanted to make sure that you all know that this particular, uh, issue at Talking Rock Road is in the unincorporated portion of the, uh, county. Uh, the applicant is wanting to rezon it, uh, to C2. Uh, it is currently zoned RR in the county. Uh, it does fit the criteria of being contiguous to C property, uh, the property, um, throughout the corridor is C2. So, from a land use perspective, uh, it is, uh, appropriate land use. The applicant is looking at, um, a future use that would be consistent with the municipal uses in C2. Uh, the applicant's request, and I believe he's here, if y'all want to hear from him in a moment, uh, is merely wanting to, uh, annex, rezon annex into the city, uh, because our buffering, um, uh, is a little more forgiving, uh, for his parcel. So, that is consistent with county municipalities that, uh, we have a little more forgiveness in our, I believe, twenty-foot, uh, rear buffer versus a thirty or thirty-five foot. So, with that, um, I'll, y'all want to hear from the applicant, his attendance?
Please come forward.
Yes, sir.
And state your name for the record.
Edward R. Cochran.
Cochran, thank you for coming.
Thanks for having me. I appreciate it.
And tell us what you want to do, sir.
Well, what I've got is this, uh, on thirteen forty-three Talking Rock Road, um, it had a house on it when I purchased it, um, that was built in nineteen fifteen. Um, the house was unrestorable. It was termite infested. Um, so what we did was we, we tore the house down, cleaned up the lot. Um, initially, I just was gonna use the lot for, um, storing my RV and a couple of trailers that I have, that I had over at Philadelphia Storage. When, uh, before I purchased it, I talked to a gentleman, um, in the county, and, uh, he didn't guarantee it, but he said it would be pretty easy to get it rezoned to commercial. And we had talked about setbacks and whatnot. When I went to, um, I, I had repurchased the property. When I went to get this done, we later found out that because a piece of this property was touching agricultural, there had to be a thirty-five foot buffer. The property is only, I believe, a hundred and ten feet wide. A thirty-five foot buffer, and you can't even drive on the buffer. Um, in other words, they want to go from the property line out thirty-five foot, and you have to put up shrubs or fence or trees or something to, uh, buffer that neighbor. Um, with the city, uh, they don't have that buffer. It's, I believe, ten feet on each side, instead of thirty-five feet on one side and fifteen on the other, or maybe even twenty. So, uh, that's what I wanted to do, was get that annexed into the city, um, and get it rezoned commercial. Uh, later on down the road, I was thinking about, uh, maybe putting in a, uh, truck and RV accessories, or, uh, maybe just using it for small RV storage.
Council, anyone have requests for this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna have to go through this entire process, read, we have to adopt this ordinance, and then we have to come back and, and approve the, uh, any case, I think.
Well, uh, let's say so first. It doesn't matter which ordinance you do first, but there is an ordinance for annexation, and then there's an ordinance that would rezon the property that'll be effective upon, uh, completion or the second reading of the annexation ordinance. So, you would do tonight a first reading of the annexation ordinance and a first reading of the zoning ordinance, and, uh, and then when you did the second reading, you do a second reading of both, and it, it'd be effective upon that second reading.
Okay. Council, I would like to have a motion for the first reading of the, um, ordinance. This would be the zoning ordinance for this particular piece of property for Mr. Cochran. First reading.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Brandon, is the county, uh, we know the final of this annexation?
Uh, we did, uh, we did receive, uh, send the letter and received, uh, a response back, uh, non-objection.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. And now we will have the, a motion for the first reading of the annexation ordinance. For the same piece of property. I will give it in a motion.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
It never gets easier.
It never gets easier. Okay, so that takes care of that. I don't think we can do anything else tonight, and we have to go back to the next reading, correct? The next meeting.
Right, it would come up at the next meeting. If we're in a hurry, you could do it at the work session, if you wanted to, which would be, you know, the end of March.
You asked a question. Thank you, you asked a question.
So, I'm, I'm new to all this. I've never done this before.
What is it, you're gonna do the first, and now you have to do, do it again, and talking about doing a second?
That is correct. And Mr. Siphon, would you please speak to that about our next one?
Yeah, uh, the city is not a county entity, so it's created by charter granted by the General Assembly, and the charter provides for certain city powers and also provides for certain procedures. And one of the procedures, or one of the, uh, sections of the charter says that, uh, if you're going to do, the city council's going to do an ad that has the force of law. Uh, an example would be moving your property from the county into the city, where you're subject to the city's regulations and not the county's regulations. Uh, you gotta do it by ordinance. And the charter also says, in order to pass an ordinance, uh, it's gotta be introduced in one meeting, which we've done tonight, and then it's gotta be passed in a second meeting. Um, and I think the concept behind that, by the General Assembly, is it lets the public, uh, have a chance to know and hear. of getting notice during the time of the first reading, and if somebody's really concerned that it may affect them, they have time until the second meeting to get a hold of the ordinance, read it, and be able to give some comment to the city council. So summary, short story is, takes two readings to pass the ordinance.
But I thought that's what we did Tuesday. We had, where the public, there was a notice put out on the fence, and the public, there was...
No, sir, that is our pending zoning ordinance. Approve. Come through us tonight.
You are correct that we did give notice to the public by that public hearing.
Okay.
We don't have to do another public hearing.
Right.
But we don't just pass only zoning ordinances. You know, sometimes you pass a building code ordinance where you're imposing certain standards to construct a building. And so it also has two readings, and it's not a public hearing requirement for it, but again, by doing the two reading process, it does give notice to the general public, and does give them a chance, a chance to have input with the council over that new ordinance.
Okay. So what's going to happen at the end of March? What's going to take place at that time?
Well, what I was suggesting to the council was that their next regularly scheduled meeting is the work session at the end of March, rather than the April meeting, and it's two or three days quicker center than the first Monday in April. So I was sort of suggesting if they wanted to, they could have the second reading at the last Thursday in March, which is their work session day, as opposed to being the first Monday in April, and it just would push it to completion a little quicker.
All right, I appreciate you explaining that. And I'm not in a hurry, so whatever works best for them, either March or April.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we have our, our next item D, consideration of ordinance number 2020-10 for the city of Jasper zoning ordinance amendment zoning map approval. So it turns out that we need an ordinance to be able to approve the map that we would like to have for zoning. And I'm not going to explain that any further. Brandon, I'll let you go first.
And I'll put it, from staff's perspective, this is an annual, I guess, annual thing that, that communities do. In essence, what you are doing tonight is we have our zoning map on display if there's any desire from the public or from the council to look at this map. We did have a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday, February 25th at 6:00 PM, whereupon there was no public input, very few comments from the Planning and Zoning Commission members. Staff, along with Mr. Siphon, provided some brief comments that this is kind of a procedural element that communities do in regards to setting forth the standard in which you approve your zoning map, and then the subsequent approval of said map. So this would be, at least the approval of the map would be something done annually in a January, February setting. So with that, does Mr. Siphon want to add anything?
The only thing I'd add is that our zoning ordinance didn't have, as clear as it needed to be, the procedure for the adoption of the new map. So the ordinance before you clarifies that procedure by setting out specifically how it's done, and it also adopts the updated zoning map. And this is a very good thing to have, because if you go several years, you know, and you don't update your map, then sometimes it gets confusing as to what is the current zoning of property. And so if we, you know, do it on a regular administrative basis of every year, then you'll always be operating off of the current updated map.
And this is also the first reading of this, or it requires two, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I need a motion, counsel, for consideration of ordinance number 2020-10 to allow us to, to update our zoning map approval. So moved. So moved.
So moved.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unannounced. Thank you, Mr. Siphon. We're going to get to new business. Okay, under new business, I'd leave consideration and approval for additional water lines for Grandview project. Brandon?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, counsel, as the memo indicates, even though this has been talked about for a while, this is a new request staff is having, we're probably less than 1,500 feet away from the location, or the fork in the road, the location of where the county's proposed water treatment facility at Grandview. If you recall, they had worked with the community, they got working through the engineer, APD, to create a footprint, to draw 333,000 gallons per day out of Grandview lake. There had been a commitment some years back that the county, the county was going to put that in, and the city was going to run the line. We are, we've not budgeted any monies in the 2020 budget. However, I would be asking you all tonight, and Mr. Hall is here, to give you some quotes if you so desire to move forward with kind of getting this last leg, but I would be asking for authorization not to exceed a certain amount and to amend the 2020 budget use of fund balance to accomplish it if you so desire.
So you need an optimization for how much, Tony?
David's got, David's got some quotes he can share with y'all.
We had a separate company in FED, Corin Mayne, come in at $13,165. Ford Line come in with no bid. Calum Leader Company come in at $15,261. So low bid would be Corin Mayne at $13,165.
For the amount up to like 15 or?
Up to 15. If it is the desire of the council for us to move forward with this, I would like to not to exceed 15. I would think that their $13,165 is going to do it, but I don't want to be out there and miss a hydrogen if we need to.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion to authorize staff to speed up to 15 on this project for finishing up.
I'd like to make, make a motion to set the low bid of $13,165 with the amount not to exceed $15,000 if additional cost occurred.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unannounced. Item M, consideration approval of updated Gateway site plan. Brandon?
Mr. Mayor, this is counsel, and for the public, you may recall there was a rezoning that occurred on 13, the Gateway, the Gateway at Grandview project. It's a PUD planning and development of 100-plus single-family, age-restricted development. You'll see in your package of site plan, rather than staff trying to just give a unilateral approval to the developer, I thought it would be appropriate to share this with you all. They provided this to us, I believe, Thursday. Staff has no issues with the approach, and from a land development perspective, there is no change of zoning, there's no change in land disturbance permit. In effect, what I'm wanting you all to do is, I guess, give staff direction that you're accepting that their plan is to put in the Phase 1, which consists of about 53 single-family residential units. They put in the associated infrastructure with that, along with the amenity area, clubhouse, pickleball courts, et cetera. The Phase 2, the way they staged this would be where they would extend the existing land and infrastructure to accommodate the other 48 to 50 homes. Once again, when we had approached this some months back with the developer, they had met some challenges with their, their site development costs, and so they are just wanting to make sure that as they stage this, that they can present a viable product to the community, but in the event that if something were to happen, and the second phase, if you will, is not able to be completed of the 100 units, then they've at least got the, in essence, a smaller development, which does not, again, affect the land use or the zoning. It's just a development process that I go through to get buy-in for the concept plan.
So now, would you like for this updated Gateway site plan to actually spell out Phase 1 and not Phase 2, or you want this to be planned itself?
If, this was a site plan specific approval, I believe, in October of 2018.
Okay.
And so what I'm wanting to do is to essentially say that this updated site plan is presented you all are comfortable with, and then the phasing part is just from a constructability standpoint.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve this updated site plan if you're good.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion?
All in favor? Disagreed?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Disagreed? Unannounced. Item G is an, excuse me, an alcohol application, approval to advertise for Folks' Adventures LLC doing business as Walmet Cellars at 916 Old Philadelphia Road. Brandon?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, this is another procedural element which we have to seek out, council's authorization to allow us to commence with the advertisement. If so moved, this would be for Folks' Adventures LLC, DBA Walmet Cellars at 916 Old Philadelphia Road. The background preliminary check, there was no disqualifying factors. We will be working with our city attorney, we've identified some inconsistencies or ambiguity in our alcohol ordinance. I'll let him comment if that would disqualify us from at least advertising this applicant's request, but in effect, they're willing to do wine tastings and sell wine by the drink. We do think that that would be prohibited, and the applicant is okay with just doing wine tastings and then doing a retail selling of wine as the bottle. But if y'all are accepting, we can go ahead and begin the advertising process. This still has to be put before y'all in April for any sort of final consideration of alcohol license issuance.
So basically, if you're asking for approval to move this application forward to?
To advertise.
To advertise, and then come back in front of us at another time for approval, is that correct?
At the next meeting, yes, sir.
At the next meeting.
To make a motion, we approve advertisement for Folks' Adventures to proceed with the license of their wine and beer.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So they don't want to have wine. Wine tastings are okay without a permit? David? Um, I think what I was understanding was that it was just a motion to proceed forward. I don't think they can have wine tastings out of permit or a liquor license.
No, that, I was, I was adding extra to let you all know that staff will be working with the city attorney and applicant.
Okay.
On the final issuance of the application, but in the event that we're not able to work it out, we'll still have it on to either table or issue the alcohol license for just the selling of bottles of wine.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Didn't we discuss that at one time on what we needed to change for the, by the drink? One deal.
Separate license, I believe. We've got a wine ordinance now that I believe allows this. Maybe you may want to look at that.
I think they added it to the brewery.
Yeah, exactly. They added it to the brewery.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I knew there was something.
Any further discussion? We have a motion in the second. All in favor? Disagreed?
And that's just first reading. Or no, approval, excuse me, that's just first reading.
Approval to advertisement. Item M is a consideration and approval of statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement between the city of Jasper and the Georgia Emergency Management Agency, GMA, and to authorize mayor or city manager to execute an agreement on final approval by the city attorney. And I think I heard Lonnie talking about that this morning. So would you speak to us about that, Lonnie?
Yes, sir. The county gave me the application to bring in to present to the city manager and mayor. In the past, if we had some sort of disaster, tornado, whatever, and there was a lot of damage, the city and the county could jointly file in, with...
But if y'all are accepting, we can go ahead and begin the advertising process. This still has to be put before y'all in April for any sort of final consideration of alcohol license issuance.
So basically, if you're asking for approval to move this application forward to?
To advertise.
To advertise, and then come back in front of us at another time for approval, is that correct?
At the next meeting, yes, sir.
At the next meeting.
To make a motion, we approve advertisement for Folks' Adventures to proceed with the license of their wine and beer.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So they don't want to have wine. Wine tastings are okay without a permit, David?
I think what I was understanding was that it was just a motion to proceed forward. I don't think they can have wine tastings out of permit or a little bit.
No, I was adding extra to let you all know that staff will be working with the city attorney and applicant on the final issuance of the application. But in the event that we're not able to work it out, we'll still have it on to either table or issue the alcohol license for just the selling of bottles of wine.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Didn't we discuss that at one time on what we needed to change for the, by the drink?
Separate license, I believe. We've got a wine ordinance now that I believe allows this. Maybe you may want to look at that.
I think they added it to the brewery.
Yeah, exactly, they added it to the brewery.
Yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion? We have a motion in the second, all in favor? Opposed?
And that's just first degree approval. No, approval, excuse me, that's just first degree.
Approval to advertise. Item G is a consideration and approval of statewide mutual aid and assistance agreement between the City of Jasper and the Georgia Emergency Management Agency, GMA, and to authorize the mayor or city manager to execute an agreement on final approval from the city attorney. And I think I heard Lonnie talking about that this morning. So would you speak to us about that, Lonnie?
Yes, sir. The county gave me the application to bring in, to present to the city manager and mayor. In the past, if we had some sort of disaster, tornado, whatever, and there was a lot of damage, the city and the county could jointly file with FEMA, GMA, or whatever to try to get some assistance. Now they are separating the two, and the city will have to file, and the county will have to file. But we, the county has, the EMA director has instructed me, if we could, to go ahead and give the mayor permission to sign off on this and then get that finished filling out the application and get it back to him as soon as possible so that they can turn these in to the person in charge of the applications. But it's just to help us get assistance whenever we do need it.
If I could add that, you know, if there's a natural disaster and there's a declaration of a disaster area that includes Jasper, then part of the documentation that either the federal emergency management or the Georgia, they want to see the mutual aid agreement. It does, you know, like if it hit part of the county and didn't hit the city, if you need your fire personnel or your law enforcement personnel, you know, that you have no access, you don't have to send them to help. But if you do send them to help, then you're entitled to be reimbursed by the person or the government that you're helping. But the concept is it would flow from the state and the feds in that disaster area declaration. And this is a form standard agreement that's done statewide, so I don't have a problem with it if y'all want it free.
Counsel, I need a motion to approve this agreement between the City of Jasper and the Georgia EMA.
So moved.
And to authorize the mayor or the city manager to execute this agreement.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Done. I need a motion going to executive session to discuss legal matters.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
I need a second.
Say second.
If you will please excuse us, we'll be right back. Counsel, I need a motion going to executive session.
So moved.
Now, second?
Second.
We are now back in session. Moving right along, committee of four, this is the fun part.
All right.
Development Committee, that would be council members Dr. Sunny Proctor and Kirk Raffield.
Mr. Mayor, obviously tonight we had a brief discussion about reviewing some of our zoning ordinance issues. We also are exploring the opportunity of getting some professional guidance on that. Brandon has gotten a preliminary estimate, and he and I talked today about the possibility of in the very near future meeting with CPL to discuss that amount and the scope of their work. And I'll update you as soon as we have any further information.
So do I need a motion from you to commission that work, to, or commission the investigation of that?
I don't think so, sir. I mean, I think we're, I think we're under, do we need a motion, Brandon, to move forward?
I think as long as there's kind of the consensus knowing that any sort of money expended out of a work order with Hart Patterson will come back. And if y'all are comfortable with the authorization of us presenting y'all with that from CPL in April.
We need to make it up to ten, fifteen dollars. I will add that I had a conversation with the mayor about this today, and we may have, we may have at least talked about being a little more aggressive than are willing to commit what's necessary, but Brandon, just give me a note of balance.
Okay, Street and Parks Committee, and let's see who we have on that. That would be council members Ann Snaby and John Faust.
One of the things that we discussed in was our stage and the liability that we possibly might have. Like to see if we could direct staff to get a quote up to thirty thousand dollars for a new stage. The other thing that we discussed is playground equipment. Like to go ahead and proceed with staff to get some quotes, not to exceed fifty thousand dollars for our city park.
Okay, and can we amend that a little bit to direct staff to begin the demolition of the wooden playground equipment at city park?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry after.
That's safety, so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, along with the, with the stage part of that, thirty thousand dollars, that's included the sound system and banners.
Okay, sound, isn't that good? And who is going to address the integral property?
Okay, and the integral property, we discussed to remove the drive-through, be able to create more parking downtown.
And are we directing staff now to begin that process of demolition?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we are, okay, good.
And also we want staff to get a price.
On that sign?
On the sign.
Right.
And the money to spend on the
Building improvement?
Building improvement is not to exceed fifteen thousand.
Okay.
And then let them in at the twenty-twenty budget.
Anything further from the Street and Parks Committee at this time? Administration Committee, council members Jim Levy and Ann Snaby.
Committee would like to ask staff to proceed with exploration of new software for the city, computer software.
Okay.
No price on that yet, that will be part of the exploration.
And do you have anything else from that man, Mr. Levy?
Just for council's information, there's work being done on job descriptions and
Personnel policies.
Personnel policies. I would hope that that would be, our recommendations would be to the staff within the next thirty days, and possibly staff can have it back to us with their suggestions and consideration in the third quarter of this year.
Okay.
The other thing that we did discuss was securing a professional service to get an agreement with an appraiser to identify key city property or city-owned parcels that are marketable, if selling.
And Brandon, do you concur with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I think that there was also something about surplus vehicles and beginning a process of, Jim?
I would like for staff to proceed with explor, with developing a list of surplus properties for consideration to be sold as surplus.
Okay. And Water, Wastewater Committee, council members John Faust and Dr. Sunny Proctor.
With, at the committee, we'd like to direct the staff to secure some pricing for match point for the public and council member, that's the company we're working with on our leak detection.
And for the public, would you say what that is for, counsel?
The leak range is very important if you're anticipating increasing the amount of water that you can treat. And over the last several years, we've demonstrated tremendous improvement for that. And this group has been working with us and staff to evaluate some zoning meters where we can actually put meters throughout the city, which will identify early on areas that leaks may be occurring so that we can address those in a quicker fashion.
Thank you, sir.
Also aids in our survey of our infrastructure, which we historically have been accumulating over the last several years with our GPS system. Just one other brief mention of our, for those of you who have been following this, we're in the, we're in the kind of the waiting phase from some potential, potential funding for our wastewater treatment expansion, which we've talked about. And we think that we may be hearing something relatively soon about that, even though we don't have any specifics about the numbers on that, but hopefully before too long we'll have some positive energy going that way, too.
Thank you, sir. And our Police and Fire Committee would be council members Kirk Raffield and Jim Levy.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, as discussed in our retreat and previous meetings with the department heads, speaking with the police chief, it is time for us to go ahead and renew our body armor for the police department. So I'd like to come out of committee and direct the staff to work with the police chief in his department on securing new body armor for the entire police department, solicit quotes and bids up to the amount of twelve thousand dollars. Go ahead and amend the twenty-twenty budget to reflect that.
Cool. Thank you, sir. Anything further from Police and Fire, Mr. Faust?
No, sir, lots of good things going on, fortunately, new vehicles in both departments. Everything's going well, very proud of what they did.
The public at large, all of this is coming forth from the two-day retreat that we had. I think that probably turned out to be one of the best things that we could have ever done because we were able to get all of this together and try to move us forward in certain directions. We know that there's going to be a slow process, but we're also going to show progress as we possibly can. So at this point, I don't think I've got anything else on that, on the retreat. Brandon, if you have something else, I'll let you speak to that.
Nothing further to add?
Nothing further to add, okay. Any other council member?
Great experience, very much enjoyed it. Got time to spend with staff as well as fellow council members. We, I think we moved the ball a little bit forward the last couple days.
Definitely a great opportunity to work with staff and building report we made.
I have a financial report, Brandon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and just kind of piggybacking off the nice comments about the retreat. Staff, I think it was a positive experience for us, and we do appreciate y'all and for the community at large, and we'll do our best to begin kind of getting these niches done. I'd like to thank Chattahoochee Technical College for allowing us to utilize their room to conduct it. It was a pretty far retreat for me to walk across the road, but it was well-served and I appreciate it. From the financial report, you may recall last month, I gave you a memo in addition to the associated checks over five thousand and the updated SPOS list. If you recall, the SPOS 2014 will end June 30 of this year. We still have quite a bit more months to collect, but you'll see that spreadsheet in there of what we're up to now. In regards to the general fund, we are currently running revenues over expenditures in the amount of five hundred thirty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty-five cent. Some of this is, in fact, of just when we pay the bills and issue checks, and we still are being mindful that you'll see some of our revenue, not necessarily the lost receipts. They did come in at one hundred nine thousand, six hundred seventy-one dollars and some change. But the TAVT, which is still, once again, the Title II de la Louram tax, we came in at fifty-three, eighty-two, sixty-one, five thousand, six hundred, five thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars for February. For comparison, this time last year in that same month, we collected thirty-one thousand, eight hundred nineteen dollars. So the two months collected in 2020 has been ten thousand, four hundred and ten. The two months collected in 2019 was fifty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-nine. So you'll continually hear me provide you that number just as an awareness that in terms of how we do business and how we generate revenues, that is a pretty significant hit for a community of our size. The building permits, Lonnie and his team has done a really good job. You'll hear some more good stuff, but in two months, as of the reporting period, I think Lonnie has some more even today in March, we're at twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifty. In regards to water and sewer, we do, I want to point out that we are running revenues over expenditures of two eighty-five, oh sixty. There is, just in the times that we're in, there are revenues down in water in regards to just, that's just the way things go. In regards to, we're trying to run that as a business and keep that thing viable, and it's a good business to be in, we're by the service property. Leach rate receipts are down. Cost of construction aid, Lonnie and his team and the whole city staff's doing a good job trying to be mindful of revenues. That is up thirty-eight thousand, five hundred for this year. So good job to them, and beyond that, I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, sir.
Jim, I'd like to talk to the mayor. There is a clean, clean, I think it's a House bill, it may be a Senate bill, to change the procedures of the title, add a Louram tax to hopefully increase the city's procedures. And I can find you the bill number tomorrow, I just don't remember it off the top of my head. But I think it'd be a great thing if y'all would contact the local legislative delegation.
Oh, and we will, would you please send that out to all?
And ask them to support that bill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Anything further? Development Board, the board would be from Lonnie Waters. Come tell us, Lonnie, all good news.
It is good.
Okay, I like that.
Mayor and council, for the month of February, we've issued nine new residential permits, one new commercial permit, one remodeling, one electrical, two land disturbing permits, seven sign permits. We've done fifty-two on-site inspections of buildings and activities going on, seven soil erosion inspections, four pre-construction meetings, eleven renewals for new businesses, which are Foothill Legal Law Firm, Aslan LLC Business Office, Harper Blue Boutique and Home, and one eight-hundred pack-outs. So those are new business licenses. We've also done seventy-one insurance tax fees have been processed, and that brought in eight thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and seventy cents. So that's eighteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars for two months. And we stole permits this morning in the amount of over four thousand dollars, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Level? Police, report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The Jasper Police Department from February responded to six hundred ninety-eight calls from the 911 center, responded to fifty-eight murder vehicle accidents, issued a total of sixty-nine citations for the following, one DUI, thirty-eight speeding, three seatbelt, four unlawful use of wireless devices, texting, driving, one uninsured motor, seventeen miscellaneous violations, five suspended or revoked driver's license, Georgia State Patrol, a total of thirty-seven, grand total of a hundred and six in city court, total of thirty-two state warrants taken for the following, simple battery, family violence, simple battery, just a person over sixty-five, family violence felony, two obstructions, three public intoxication, three shoplifting, one possession of controlled substance, two possession of marijuana, less than ounce, one fleeing attempting to elude, felony, one reckless driving, failure to stop at stop signs, failure to maintain lanes, driving on the wrong side of the road, aggressive driving, one simple assault, family violence, criminal trespass, family violence. violence, two possession of methamphetamine, possession of drug-related objects, prescriptions not in original container, crossing the guard line with drugs, carrying drugs into the vehicle, battery, one count of cruelty to children, third degree, one false imprisonment, and one habitual violator, miscellaneous calls answered, 26 alarm, eight disorderly, nine harassment calls, six trespassing and roaring, 34 suspicious activities, 17 domestic issues investigated, no bribery.
That sounds like quite a lot. Is that pretty average for one month, or is it...
The warrants are a little high. That's two pager.
I believe you had some promotions in the department recently?
I did. I recently promoted Nathan Henderson, he's ranked sergeant, he's a sergeant on night shift, and Lieutenant Chris Knight, he was a sergeant on that rotation, he was a sergeant, he was promoted, he's the shift commander over there, he promoted lieutenant over there.
Good dude.
Out of their work.
Thank you.
Good job, sir.
Chief Ruck? Last is serving, not least.
I love you, you have my attention.
Mayor, council?
For the month of February, the city fire department responded to 215 calls, a little worse, two structure fires, two vehicle fires, one grass, 12 murder vehicle accidents with injuries, 82 emergency medical responses, 16 other calls, and by the end of the month, 240 total, fire inspection looked at nine sets of various plans for structural renovation, looking up to 25.
Very good. Council, it's a message for this town. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience have anything to come before us today? This will be a good time. If not, a motion to adjourn is always in order. So moved. And we are adjourned.